Good morning and welcome. This is Ventura County Board of Supervisors, our regular meeting, and it is September 27th, and welcome to your boardroom. And I would like to ask that we have a call to order with a roll call. Madam Clerk, good morning.
Good morning. Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Supervisor Michaels?
Here.
Supervisor Flynn?
Yes.
And Supervisor Long?
Here. And if we would rise for a moment of affirmation, we have Chaplain Bob Stockman from the Ventura County Sheriff's Department joining us this morning. If you'd like to step up to the podium, Chaplain. Appreciate you being here this morning, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to open with a word of trust. We've trusted the weathermen. They've showed us where the hurricanes were coming, where they've deviated, and where they've missed people and where they've hit people. We place trust in God. I'd like to read a piece of scripture, but before that, I'd like to read something from Robert Foster. Robert Foster said something. He said, "I'd like to offer one more counsel to those who find himself devoid of the presence of God. It is this: Wait on God. Wait still and silent. Wait attentive and responsive. Learn and trust precedes faith." Faith is a little like putting your car in gear. Right now, you cannot exercise faith. You cannot move forwards. Do not berate yourself like that. But when you are unable to put your spiritual life in drive, do not put it in reverse. Put it in neutral. Trust is how you put your spiritual life in neutral. Trust is confidence in the character of God. Firmly and deliberately, you say to yourself, "I do not understand what God is doing, or even where God is, but I do know he's out there doing me good." This is trust. Micah 7:7 is where I'd like to open in a word of affirmation. I apologize. It's a very small book, extremely small. Therefore I will look to God. I will wait for God for my salvation. My God will hear me. Heavenly Father, I know many individuals were praying to you prior to the hurricanes, were praying to you during the hurricanes, were praying to you after the hurricanes. Many are still praying to you. But Father, as we stand before you here today, in this wonderful state of California, and here in Ventura, in this room of the Board of Supervisors, I ask Heavenly Father for a moment of silence. I ask Heavenly Father that we would, we would hear you, that we would take a moment before we make decisions, before we go about our business, before we make the decisions for Ventura, and think of those on the East Coast, think of those at the Gulf, think of those that have suffered loss, and look at what we can do, how we can help those, how we can reflect on our decisions here and make changes that would be felt worldwide, not just to Ventura. I ask this in Jesus' precious name, amen. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Michaels, will you lead us in the pledge?
My pleasure. Hand over heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
There's a motion of second to accept the minutes of Tuesday, September 20th, hearing no objection. So ordered. At this time, we'll have agenda review. Good morning, Mr. CEO.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there are a couple of, or a few minor changes here. We have item 24, you have a revised board letter. The item requires public hearing to be set for October 11th at 10:00 a.m. Item 35 has a revised board letter. And item 38, request to remove from the agenda.
38?
38.
Okay. Sir, a motion to accept the changes on the agenda review?
So moved.
Motion of second, any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered. Our consent agenda items 10 through 20.
Second.
Motion of second on the consent is presented. Any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered. At this time, we have an opportunity for public comment from citizens representing, wishing to make presentations regarding county-related matters not on our agenda. Any cards submitted?
Not submitted.
Woo-hoo. Well, then, we'll skate right to board comments, and we'll start with Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. Just on the consent, I wanted to congratulate Ojai, Upper Ojai, for their Fire Safe Council Grant Award. It's great to be able to have the community working with the fire district and getting some grants to help themselves. I also wanted to comment on the last V-COG meeting, that we were looking at asking our staff to see what is involved in doing, looking at the reorganization unfolding together with Transportation Commission and others, just kind of, let's see what would be involved if we choose those paths. And then I would just ask that our board close in honor of the people on this list.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, good morning. I'd ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, which I submit in the front.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
I would like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and I'd like to call one of them out. I'm sure it's going to be a sad loss for all of us, but Diana Vogelbaum, the Rain Project Manager, passed away at her home on Friday evening. She's had a pretty long and three-year, very courageous battle for the last three years with cancer, and she just did a wonderful job at the Rain program. She'll really be missed. Her children were students at Nordoff High School, my wife and I both had in class, and so it's a sad day for us when we heard about Diana's passing away.
Absolutely. Supervisor Michaels?
Yes, I would ask that the board adjourn in memory of the people on this list from the 4th District.
Okay, thank you. Just one quick informational piece I'd like to provide to the board. On October 12th at 11:00 a.m., at the California State Coastal Conservancy and the Nature Conservancy, we're going to have a celebration of the recent acquisition of the 276 acres of the coastal wetlands, dunes, and agricultural lands as part of the Greater Ormond Beach Wetlands Restoration Project. And it will take place at the site, and then there will be lunch followed, hosted by Dr. Thomas C. Holden, Mayor of Oxnard. So I will provide the informational sheet to you. It really will be a celebratory, celebrating day as we move ahead in this acquisition of this tremendous resource of our Ormond Beach wetlands. And I too have a list to submit, asking the board to adjourn in memory. One other quick thing, had our scheduled and regular meeting of our disaster, Ventura County Disaster Council last Friday, and as we went over a variety of items, certainly updates on the, from our public safety personnel and EOS on the Katrina, we had an excellent presentation from Jason Smith on the role of Red Cross in the devastated area. And there was a lot of interest in making sure that we're going out to our communities here in small forums, meetings with city council, whatever's asked of and needed, to inform our citizens what we have in place and the preparedness for disaster response and what we're doing to improve in areas. And I just offer that to you because I know there are meetings scheduled already. In Port Juaniemi on November 7th, there will be a meeting at the Community Center, 6:30 p.m. In Santa Paula on Wednesday, October 19th at 1:00 p.m., Santa Paula Chamber. Hollywood Beach Silver Strand, 7:30 p.m., October 11th. And then Congresswoman Lois Capps is holding an emergency response roundtable on Tuesday, October 11th, from 10 to 12. And she apologized, I talked to her the other day, for having scheduled it on Tuesday, but that was how her calendar worked, and I, she offered any of us who'd like to send our staff members to that meeting, she would welcome them in attendance from our board offices. So just that information for you. So I know that the EOS team is ready to put together whatever you may need in your community to reach out to the residents so that they can learn how we are prepared, what we're doing to even improve on the ground our preparedness, and to do our very best to alleviate the fears that are out there as a result of the disasters we've had nationally. And the other thing, I, we talked about doing a, some kind of a outreach in a mass mailing countywide, and, you know, talking about what venue might be available to do that, whether it's utility bills or something, and we're, so we're going to work through that idea that we could put together a tri-fold pamphlet and do a mailing out to all of the residents in the county. And just a reminder to all of us, as I did go home and opened up my phone book, your phone book at the front, has excellent information on disaster preparedness, something to maybe rip out and put on your, put on your refrigerator and check off the boxes, make sure that you're prepared at home for that 72-hour to seven-day preparedness challenge, and just refresh your memory on what to do to be prepared.
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
That's very important information and good work. The most important thing is that after, people, once they get a little ways away from a disaster, tend to fall back into old habits, and what may be, you know, put on your refrigerator with the magnet starts to curl and get a little strange-looking, and you get mad and throw it away. After the earthquake in Simee, where we had so much damage, you know, I made sure that there were shoes by the bed, and there was a flashlight and all of that, and then one day I looked at the flashlight and the batteries were dead because I had forgotten totally about it. So, you know, I think another warning, reminder to all of us, and something that might be talked about at those meetings, is you can't do it once and forget it. You have to remain prepared, you know, like the fire, the fire district always recommends change your batteries on your smoke alarm twice a year, you know, when you change your clocks, you know, maybe your disaster council could think in those terms of something that could be done to remind people to stay prepared, not just get there, but stay there.
Right, absolutely. Okay, that wraps up our board comments. Any others? All right, and let's move to our rest of our regular agenda, and that takes us right over to item number 28. And good morning, Ms. Schulman.
Good morning, Chair Long. Supervisors, Mr. Johnson, Linda Schulman, Director of Behavioral Health. The first item before you today is ratification and approval of our annual contract with the State Department of Mental Health. It's a ratified because the state sent it to us late, so we processed it as soon as we could, and the only thing that's probably, well, there's actually nothing different about this one, it's just our annual agreement to run the mental health plan for our Medi-Cal eligibles.
Move, approval?
Motion of second, hearing no questions, no objections, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 29?
This is also a ratification approval for our annual contract with the state for our co-op program. This is our employment services program and our relationship with the co-op to provide training and job placement for our clients. Again, late because of state issuing stuff to us and also negotiations with the co-op as we changed our relationship with them in moving the requirement to be CARF-accredited from the department over to our partnering agency, which is work training programs. It was a very large, labor-intensive administrative function for the department to be CARF-accredited for a small program, and it also cost us some money every year to pay for that. And so we thought, let's make that switch in the midst of structures, and now work training programs has taken over the CARF-accreditation aspect, and because of that, there were some requirements to change how the contract read, and it just took time to process that.
Okay, questions?
Second, and I'd just-
Motion of second.
Like to comment, something else that was exciting this week was the opening of Casa Esperanza-
Esperanza, the development for housing for the mentally ill that was funded by Mr. Murdoch. And one of the things that he envisions there also is a work program and the idea of being able to get people, our clients, out into the workforce is wonderful, making them independent and being able to put some money in their pocket is just such a great benefit. And looking at this program and other programs out there to help mentally ill to become more self-sufficient, I think is a really good goal, and I applaud the program.
Thank you.
Motion of second, any objection? Hearing, none, so ordered. Item 30, ratification.
This is our annual contract with the state for the operations of our conditional release program. Again, late because it came to us from the state late. This program is 100% paid for by the state, and that's what this board letter represents, and it's our agreement to go ahead and manage that program.
Move the program.
Second.
Motion of second and objection to the motion. Hearing, none, so ordered. Item 31, ratification.
This is our annual contract with the State Department for Alcohol and Drug Programs in order for us to provide those services, again, late because it came late from the state.
We're going to have to have a talk with the state.
Yeah, really. Questions?
They don't understand our policy here.
You tell them, Jim. Questions? Action?
Move approval.
Motion of second and objection, hearing, none, so ordered. Item 32, ratification.
The same speech, late because it came late from the state. But I would like to highlight in this one, this one goes along with our contract in item 28 for Medi-Cal eligibles. This is actually the performance contract with the state for the things that we're responsible to do as the mental health plan. Typically, when we've been bringing this to your board in the last couple of years, we've had a paragraph in there about the state not funding SB 90 services and our request and your board's approval of continuing those services. That is different this year. As your board is aware, the governor did fund SB 90 services for this year and also has allocated money to help us pay some of the expense of last year's services, though we haven't yet received any word from the state about how that funding is going to get allocated or processed to us. So I'm sure we will be back before your board sometime in the future to go ahead and receive those funds. But I did want to highlight that, at least for this year, there is funding for the program with a comment from the governor that everybody needs to work really hard. This year, his intention is to switch the mandate to the schools as of next year. And again, I think there'll be a lot more to come on that, but at least that's the update for today.
Move approval.
Motion and a second, any questions regarding that? Hearing, none, so ordered. Item 33.
And this is approval for our contracts with Alternative Action and Intervention Institute, who are our two largest outpatient providers for Proposition 36. It's actually before your board, late because they asked us to not come to your board in July as we were continuing negotiations with them through different items that they were wanting rectified. We have come to agreement with them on all terms, and I believe we've provided some of the changes that occurred in the board letter, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Other questions?
Drug testing is in the scope of work, right?
Yes.
And will there be a report coming back? I know we are just responding to the grand jury report, and I'm just, will we have an oral report back from staff about the changes? Thank you.
Pleasure, the board.
Move approval.
Motion of second, hearing, no objection, so ordered. If I might, since you're here, Ms. Schulman, article in the paper yesterday regarding Los Angeles and their, and the work on their Prop 63 planning, one, it was, in reading, it was like exciting, you know, hear good news from LA on what they're planning to do with the mentally ill and those funds and the whole planning process. Just would, I would hope that, I know our work's been well underway too, that we always look to others to see what kind of things they're doing too, and the best practices model, just that. And look forward to hearing, hearing what comes out of our stakeholders' meetings.
Much is very similar, which is what I was happy to see when I read it. So I think, I think you'll find some similar verbiage and similar ideas that our stakeholders have done. And we expect to go public for our 30-day hearing October 7th. So we'll have our full draft of the plan out. The mental health board's going to do a final review on October 7th. And pending their review of it, then we'll post it for the 30-day public hearing, which we're scheduled right now to hold on November 7th, and then come to your board for final approval of the plan a few weeks later in November. So we're not too far behind.
Great, great, yeah. So not having details, but some components of what I read in the paper from LA's plan sounded really innovative and exciting.
It's exciting.
I read the, Madam Chair, I read the same article, and I agree with you, but at the same time, there were other articles of, for lack of a more descriptive word, of different agencies around Los Angeles dumping people onto the street in downtown LA. That would never happen here.
If I can also comment, just from being on the mental health board and seeing the effort that this board has been putting out along with the collaboration of staff, it's just been outstanding. Considering these people are volunteers, they are dedicating more hours than full-time on the outreach programs of going out to the community and getting input from clients and others in the community. It's just been outstanding. And the work of finally reaching consensus on which funds, which priorities they need to go for first, and we just realizing that even though we can't fund everything, that that might be a second phase later down the line. But it's just been an amazing effort, and the idea that we have a volunteer board helping to lead the way on that, I think they all need to be rewarded for that in some manner. But very much appreciate it, and it's a very well-functioning board, and they've gotten a, I think, some really good recommendations that we'll be hearing. Thank you.
Great, good to hear. Thank you for your work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. All right, now we'll move to item 34, which is healthcare agency ratification approval of EMS appropriation standard. Good morning, Ms. Davis.
Good morning, Supervisor Long, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. I'm Karen Davis, Deputy Director for the Healthcare Agency. The item before you is also a ratification and approval due to the state being late in submitting their application for the Emergency Medical Services Appropriation Standard Agreement for this fiscal year. Upon full execution of this agreement, it will provide revenues to the county through tobacco tax funding of $345,394. These funds are used for emergency services for patients who cannot pay. It will pay non-county hospitals within the county, physician services, and administrative expenses. If there's anything else I can answer?
Questions? So motion and a second, any objection to that? Hearing, none, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item 35, Human Services Agency Ratification Approval to Submit a Grant Application to the State of California Employment Development Department. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. My name is Elaine Crandall, Executive Director to the Workforce Investment Board. This is a ratification to approve a grant application to the state EDD for 15% project to prepare individuals for the high-wage, high-demand construction industry. This ratification is due to my own personal reluctance to write this grant due to staffing constraints, but with the hiring of our new Resource Development and Planning Manager, he very heroically agreed to take on this project, and it is to, it was due yesterday. So the project is for $445,500, and what we will be doing is training foster youth and gang-related youth, and we went ahead and included as well, adult, in case there are any Katrina evacuees that might be interested in this particular training. It will be a two-year grant, and we'll provide services to 100 individuals.
Other questions?
No question, just to comment, I like the grant, and I just like the good efforts we're seeing out of the board lately, so thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Long.
So move the recommended action.
Thank you.
Motion of second, any objection to the motion? Hearing, none, so ordered. Item 36, ratification to submit grant application.
This is a ratification to submit a grant application and to approve the budget amendments to incorporate additional workforce funds for the winter storms 2005 and the BRAC Phase I planning. And the second item is to ratify a contract with the Tri-County's Labor Foundation for the storms project. Recently, the National Emergency Grants notified us of an award of over $1 million to address the infrastructure issues as a result of the winter storms of this year. So we've submitted an application in July, and the timing was such that we could not get it before you, to this board until today. The, half the funds were allocated, and so the requests to authorize the auditor's controller to process these monies are in the amount of $535,732, and also for BRAC Phase I would be $110,000. The second item having to do with the Tri-County's Labor Foundation's contract is that the Tri-County's Labor Foundation will be the contracted provider for the restoration of public infrastructure of the National Emergency Grant.
It's motion?
Second, but I've got a couple of comments, and the most important one is that if this was applied for in July, there was time to get this item before the board. This is, I didn't count them, but all of the last items this morning have been ratifications. I don't know what the process was to contract with the Tri-County's Labor Foundation, but this says that it's effective September 1 through June 30. So I'm not comfortable this morning with all of these ratifications. I've said this before, and I'm going to start voting no on everything until it starts coming in in the proper order. There's no excuse for most of these.
Please, sure.
Some of this can be used for beach cleanup, is that right?
The National Emergency Grant, yes, absolutely can be used for beach cleanup.
You know, there was a day to clean up the beaches. We may need some help on Hollywood Beach, if I could talk with you later.
Sure, absolutely.
There's a motion and a second, any further questions? Objection to the motion? Hearing, none?
I don't, I don't object to the motion. I, I think we have had a number of ratifications, and many of them, there wasn't anything we could do about it, so I didn't have any problem. And the one that was submitted yesterday feels, but this one does feel like you blew it, okay? So hopefully that won't happen again. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Bring them forward. No objections, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have item 37, approval of a contract award with AT System Security General Services Agency. Good morning, Mr. Ruffin.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston. My name is Paul Ruffin, representing the General Services Agency. There's several recommendations tied to item 37. The first is asking that you authorize the purchasing agent to enter into a two-year agreement with AT System Security to perform unarmed security services for several locations throughout the county. The second is that you authorize the purchasing agent to, after this two-year period, enter into one-year extensions at a ceiling of a 3% increase, presuming we can negotiate same with the contractor. And thirdly is that we're asking that you authorize the GSA Director to work out with Superior Courts, that Superior Courts will accept a surcharge for the increased cost tied to full-entry screening. How we got here today is we did a request for proposal, and we got seven different bidders who responded. So this was competitively bid. The current contract had a ceiling on, the prior contract, the one that went from September '03 to September '05. So it was a set rate, therefore no increases occurred to the county because of that. The proposed contract that's in front of you has a change in terms of the staffing qualifications for the security officers all the way up through the post commander. That's related to some increased wages and benefits falling into the contract. The contract has about a 30% increase overall over the prior contract. So the increases relate to a number of items, the wages that will, are necessary to attract and retain qualified security guards, increased training that's going to be required of the guards, and so forth. For this particular fiscal year, both the General Services Agency and Healthcare Agency can accommodate the increased rates inside of our ISF, or in Healthcare's case, inside of their VCMC Enterprise Fund. For next fiscal year, the GSA square footage charge would need to be increased a certain amount to cover the increased cost of the security guards. We're thinking that increase for next fiscal year is going to be less than five cents per square foot. In terms of what else to highlight, we've had tremendous response from the prior contractor and the new one, where they've started working towards some transition issues to try to make this go really easily the middle of October. With that, I want to open it up to any questions from the board.
Other questions?
On the extensions, it's for three years after the first two, is it your intent at that time to go back out for bid at the end of that five-year period?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, because there's such a great variance in security firms, et cetera, and there's no short supply, so I would think we'd be better off. The first, the five years is fine, but I think five to seven years is about as long as you should go before rebidding, so.
Actually, five years is the maximum amount we would go, Supervisor Michaels. We may want to do it at one of the, those dates in between, like the third year, fourth year, depending on how things are and what we.
But you do, and you do have the option in the contract to rebid it.
We do.
On one of those options. Okay, great, thank you.
Great. Other questions?
What was the cost last year for this? I mean, we're looking at '05, '06, and '06, '07, so I know what the costs are being proposed. I'm wondering what the costs were.
For the GSA portion of the contract, we, for this particular year, we were thinking about $2.2 million.
Thank you.
And then for next year, it's about two, almost $2.8 million for GSA. For VCMC, they were roughly $500,000 and up to $700,000 for next year.
Thank you. Another question, I just happened to think of. One of my pet peeves, you knew this one was coming. Do you charge the courts a higher rate on square footage than you charge the non-court participants?
We do, based on full-entry screening. We do, all the calls for full-entry screening go straight to Superior Courts.
Thank you.
If it's.
Took a while.
I'm sorry?
Nothing, go ahead.
For those, a security service that are common to all the tenants, then it's allocated out.
Okay, but they are paying that full screening, okay. Because there was a point in time when they weren't.
That's correct. And the county executive office worked with Superior Court to get that changed.
Good, thank you.
Good work. Other questions? So motion and a second, any objection to the motion? Hearing, none, so ordered. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, next, well, Policy Item 38 has been removed. Policy Item 39 is Appointment of Child Care Planning Council, Appointed Member Category to Complete Term Membership. This is an item I've carried forward for the Child Care Planning Council, and it's recommended items to appoint a new member to complete the currently vacant membership term, and recommendation of individuals to fill the consumer membership category vacancy created by the resignation of Doreen Leonard. And that's my motion. Thank you. Motion and a second, any objection to that? Hearing, none, so ordered. Next up is item 40, another recommendation, to appoint David C. Homeby to the Mental Health Advisory Board. I had the opportunity to interview Mr. Homeby. He is very qualified and has gone through the review process with the Mental Health Board, attending meetings to make sure that he is aware of the obligation and responsibility, and he's eager to serve. That's my motion. There's a motion and a second, any objection to that? Hearing, none, so ordered. Item 41, Public Works Agency, Watershed Protection District, on the run, Mr. Pratt.
Good morning, Chair Long, board members, Mr. Johnston, excuse me.
It's okay. Caught you, didn't we?
For the record, my name's Jeff Pratt, I'm with the Watershed Protection District. As you recall, state law requires that we report back to your board on the use of the emergency contracting authority every 14 days. That's what we're here to do. We want to request your continue. Sorry.
It's okay. It's okay.
Continued emergency contract authorization action on the Santa Paula Airport. Without this authorization, the work won't be complete before the winter, therefore staff requests your approval. As is like, I'll just recommendations in this letter and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Action of the board. I move the recommended action. Motion and a second. Any objections?
Thank you very much.
Hearing none. Good work, keep it up. Thank you. Item 42 is our correspondence.
Move to receive and file.
Some motion to receive and file. Any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered. Well, well, well. In a while. Mr. County Counsel, is there, could we make some work of progress if we go into closed session on items?
Yes, there's only a labor negotiation closed session. It's estimated to take 15 minutes to a half hour, so certainly, yeah, and perhaps even completed if, if Mr. Nicole is available.
It is calendar for, for noon, but we've, we can do it whenever.
The agenda specifies that it can be taken any time during.
Well, if Mr. Nicole is ready, willing and able, he can skate on down. He was here a minute ago. We could go into closed session. Either way, we're taking a break at this point. Either into closed session if he is able to get here or a break.
Okay, good morning. We're back to the dais here and we're going to move ahead with our time certain items. And the first one up is a presentation that I'll be very pleased to make. That's going to be a resolution that congratulates the Child Development Resources of Ventura County on their 25th anniversary. And there he is, Don Henninger, who is the interim executive director of our Child Development Resources. And if I might, I'd like to note some of the highlights in this resolution and then present it and then ask you to certainly speak about how we're celebrating this grand event.
Very good.
So, we're all very familiar with Child Development Resources. They've been in our county all these years and have provided quality childcare services to our residents since 1980. They are certainly the hub for childcare, providing services to more than 11,776 families in the community each year. And CDR has dedicated 340 employees located in 19 locations throughout our county that provide core services that include technical assistance and training to promote quality childcare, along with free childcare referral service to anyone who might need help. There's a waiting list of more than 1,400 families in need of childcare services that CDR manages that list and does their very best to move people up quickly and get them the services they need. The core services of CDR include our Head Start preschool for over 1,100 children every year, subsidies to over 5,000 children that they receive for childcare, and this generates over $30 million to local childcare workforce annually. CDR supports and assists more than 1,400 childcare providers, offering them quality services and backup for the programs they provide. They've formed partnerships, some CDR very successfully in our county for years, with our Ventura Foster Care folks, our Calworks, our First Five, and all with the same mission and goal of providing childcare services that are quality and will make a difference to improve our children's life in the future. So, it's a pleasure to present this as they celebrate their 25th anniversary, certainly extend our sincere appreciation for the work you do, the dedication to children and our families, and for the collaboration and leadership that you have provided in working with others in our county, all dedicated with the same goal, and that is to certainly help our children and families. And I'd like to step down now and present this and please say some words.
Thank you Supervisor Long, and thank you all members of the Board of Supervisors for supporting CDR for these low 25 years. It's incredible that we've been around for so long. But in addition to our 25th anniversary, we are also celebrating 40 years of providing Head Start services within our county. Our organization was formed from two disparate organizations in 1980, so that's why we have our 25th anniversary, but 40 years as Head Start services. On this Friday, on the 30th of September, we will be having an anniversary celebration at Spanish Hills Country Club. All of you hopefully have received your invitation. We look forward to seeing some of you there. I do want to mention that I am the new executive director of CDR, following in the footsteps of my mentor Julie Irving, who will be memorialized at our anniversary tribute this Friday. So again, thank you for your efforts and your support of CDR all of these years. It means a lot to us and to our board. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you Supervisor.
Gives me a distinct honor to welcome the 2005 Amateur Softball Association Ten and Under National Champions, the Westlake Agura Girls Softball WAGS Team Thunder, and we have them before us this morning. So glad you are able to come, and we're going to make this educational too, as I understand. Pam Landry is going to give you a tour of the county, which I think you'll enjoy. I hope you'll enjoy. You'll see where people, where the votes are counted, and meet our sheriff, as I understand, and see some of our different departments throughout the county. So, I hope you'll enjoy your tour. I want to come down and read a resolution and have you girls come up and recognize you and your coaching staff. So, I'll be right down to the podium. Ladies, if you'd like to come up, we're going to present you this resolution, and we'll get the coaching staff up here, and I'll read it to you. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County honoring the 2005 Amateur Softball Association Ten and Under National Champion, Westlake Agura Girls Softball WAGS Team Thunder. Nice uniforms. Whereas the Westlake Agura Girls Softball Team Thunder achieved the distinct honor of winning a national championship for players aged 10 years and under at the Amateur Softball Association of America's Tournament Games held in San Antonio, Texas from August 2nd through August 7th, 2005. And whereas the WAGS Team made ASA National Championship history with an outstanding, astounding 12-game winning streak, which represents the most consecutive victories and the highest total number of victories ever won by any team during an ASA tournament. And whereas great teamwork created great champions out of WAGS Team members, Rachel Berman, Kelsey Brodsky, Jamie DePippo, Paige Green, Kelsey Haynes, Christina Langloy, Nicole Leonard, Kimmy Lockhart, Kaitlin Morrison, Morgan Schlobom, Brooke...
I killed that one too, did I?
Okay, sorry. Brooke Seekin, Carly Siliman, and Kelly Spear. And whereas the WAGS Team's excellence on the field has been nurtured and supported by a remarkable roster of parental all-stars, which include manager Howard Berman, and the coaching staff members Todd Haynes, Scott Morrison, Kirk Schlobom... Am I getting better? Dan Siliman, and Bob Spear. And whereas all of the Ventura County takes pride in the WAGS Team's accomplishment, and the board now therefore presents this recommendation, this commendation in honor of the WAGS, and congratulate you and your team on a tremendous victory. Congratulations. And we have separate commendations for you. If you'd like to come up, you're Coach Berman.
Actually, Todd's got to sit down.
Okay. And Todd Haynes is also the chair of our Municipal Advisory Council in Oak Park, so it's a double pleasure to have you here, and can introduce you to the board if you'd like.
Yeah, I'll say something real quick. I wear four hats today. One, as a very proud father of one of the daughters on the team. Two, as a coach. Three, as a councilman and chairman of the Oak Park Municipal Advisory Council. And four, since our manager didn't want to speak on behalf of the league, on behalf of the league, just to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors for recognizing these really amazing girls. This is a great accomplishment. And specifically to Supervisor Parks and Shan Osterhaven of her office for recognizing them. It's really been an amazing run, and thank you very much for the recognition.
Yes. Here we go, in no particular order. Rachel, where are you, baby? Look at that. That's fantastic.
Madam Chair, the photographers, why don't you come up in front here and take their pictures?
Brooke?
You're taking their backs.
And I should say that Supervisor Flynn has always been supportive of Oak Park, and agrees it yet again today.
Careful, it's going to slide out. Kels?
Yep.
Well done, baby. Christie? Christie, Christie, you're the one. Nicole? Turn to a chair. Kelly Spear? Beautiful. Carly Siliman. Congratulations, girls. Well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Girls rule. All right. Good job, girls. Thank you for coming to the boardroom today. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Girls rule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Spoken by the mother of a son.
Sorry. He knows who rules.
I know.
Thank you so much. Thank you Supervisor Parks, thank you for bringing them in. Delightful. Okay, that ends our 9:30 time certain items. We have a few more minutes before our 10 o'clock time certain, and the rest of the agenda's been completed, so let's go back to that room. And where is John? John, you're sitting by the speaker. Come on down. We'll do some more talking.
He's going to get a lot of messages, so I'll go ahead.
He's going to get a lot of messages, so I'll go ahead. And we'll be back.[331.22]
All righty. Okay. Good morning. We're back at the dais and we're back to our agenda items that are time certain. And our first one will be item 23, which is approval of the June 2005 Ventura County Child Care Needs Assessment. And who is here to present this to me? A whole good group of folks. Good. I know that we plan this and...
Hi, I'm back. Remember me?
Yes.
Don Henninger, Executive Director of Child Development Resources. And I'm here now at 10 o'clock as the immediate past Chair of the Ventura Child Care Planning Council and Chair of the Needs Assessment Committee. I'd like to introduce our team that we'll be presenting to you this morning. Lisa Sedarsky is our co-chair this year. She is a program supervisor for the CalSafe program. And Karen Carr, who's the Resource and Referral Coordinator from Child Development Resources. And Lisa Hart on this side, who is the project specialist for the council.
Good morning.
Thank you. We're here to request approval from your board as required in the California Ed Code, Section 8499.3, approval of our needs assessment we will be presenting to you in a moment. You might recall that the council participated in your childcare study session that we held here in April. And at that point, we asked the Board of Supervisors for a call to action in keeping childcare and early care and education issues at the forefront whenever you're doing planning for the county as a whole and any influence that you might have in city planning efforts. We want to thank Supervisor Longs, call her out particularly for kudos in allowing Martin Hernandez to participate in our council activities. He's been a great asset for us and a wonderful linkage back to the board. And now I'd like to ask Ms. Carr to come up and begin our presentation.
Thank you, Don.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, Lisa and I are the new Child Care Planning Council co-chairs for the fiscal year 2005, 2006. This last year, most of our energies went into working on our needs assessment. And we did have a needs assessment committee. And we also contracted with K&amp;M Enterprises, a local consulting firm, who collected data and helped with our format. This year, we're going to be working on the strategic plan. And we'll be back in a year to tell you how that's going. So now be set.
Good morning, Board members. A couple other issues we will be supporting and focusing this year will be the Preschool for All initiative, which we hope will be on the ballot June of '06. And also the SB 640, which is legislation that will provide funding for childcare providers to provide services to children with special needs. And this would be for workshops and training to give the providers the education for working with children with special needs. So, thank you. And now Lisa, will we start our PowerPoint presentation?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors and Mr. Johnson. The Child Care Planning Council of Ventura County is proud to present to you the Ventura County Child Care Needs Assessment. The Child Care Planning Council is a state-funded organization that's administered through the county school's office. I believe that all of you received a copy of the needs assessment.
We did, thank you.
Okay, great. And following the presentation today, we would like to request a letter of approval for the needs assessment. Approval by the Board of Supervisors and the county school's office is a requirement of the California Education Code, and that's why we're here today. The mission. Our mission, the Child Care Planning Council of Ventura County actively plans for quality childcare based upon the needs of children, families, and early care and education professionals. So the needs assessment is really aligning itself with our mission. When the Needs Assessment Committee took on the responsibility of putting together the needs assessment, we wanted to, we were trying to figure out how to approach it. And so what we did was we looked at some legislation, AB 1542. With passage of AB 1542 legislation in 1997, the criteria for local planning councils' needs assessments became state law. And in California, 58 counties, each one has a local planning council. And that is what Child Care Planning Council is. It is a local planning council. And the California Education Code asks that local planning councils do a needs assessment every five years. This legislation also outlines all the data elements that we're supposed to put into the needs assessment. And if you can, I believe everybody has a needs assessment document with them today. If you can refer to page three of that document, it has a table of contents. And about a third of the way down, you will see the different elements, the data elements that we're asked to do research on to find the needs for childcare in the county. The first, the elements A through K are spelled out very specifically, and we did the research on those specific items. And element A is a county-specific element. And Ventura County did take that on. We took a two-fold approach on that, and we'll explain that later in the presentation today. To summarize all the elements, we divided them into two different categories, the needs of families and the needs of children. And so we'll start out with the needs of families today. Needs of families, eligible and not eligible for subsidized childcare, including those that are on the waiting list. The centralized eligibility list, I believe, was mentioned earlier today. CDR maintains that list, and we'll go into more detail on that. By income level, the median household income by city is referenced on page 12 of your document. And we did research, city by city, to find out what the median household income was. We discovered that Port Juanaime has the lowest median household income, whereas Moore Park has the highest.
Can you repeat that? I didn't hear the first part.
Port Juanaime has the lowest household median income, and Moore Park has the highest. Receiving public assistance, we analyzed WIC, CalWorks, and Free and Reduced Lunches in order to get indicators for that data. Special needs based on geographical location. We really, we researched the county. We really didn't see any specific areas that, due to geographical location, families were having a hard time accessing childcare, and so we really didn't address that particular The centralized eligibility list. What this list is, it's sort of a one-stop shopping for families who need subsidized childcare. Instead of families going out to all the different centers and providers that provide subsidized childcare, it's a central location where they can be put on a list for when any opening should arise. Ventura County is one of the pilot projects for the cell project. In 2001, some funding came down from California to start some pilot projects, and we were lucky enough to receive some funding back in 2001. And Child Care Planning Council contracted with CDR, and they administered the central eligibility list. And we had several agencies that signed up to become part of that list, but we could still do better. And in this coming budget year, '05, '06, the state did allot funding for all the different counties to have cells. And so this will be a big project for the state this year to have centralized eligibility lists. And our county will get more funding so that we can bring up our cell up to higher standards so we can get more people involved in it. Okay, needs of children. We analyzed the age of children needing care, done by city. We did a cultural and linguistic background. And we did note that, as far as the demographics of Ventura County, that there was a considerable growth in the Hispanic population. And 20% of students from different school districts supported Spanish as their primary language. So we noted that. Special needs, 10% of children in our school districts require special education. So this is a consideration. Also, we've discovered that we need to make sure that childcare providers know how to work with children that have special needs. And we'll be emphasizing that hopefully in our strategic plan coming up. Children who are abused or neglected or risk thereof, this is a special population, and they do get first priority on the centralized eligibility list for subsidized childcare. This here is a chart analyzing the growth in age groups between 1990 and 2000, the last two U.S. Census data reports. The census is done every 10 years. And what we noted was that the biggest growth was in the age group between 10 and 14 years old, with the second biggest growth being between the five- and nine-year-old age groups. So school-aged children really did a major increase in population over a 10-year span. One of the interesting things that we noted was the slowest growth was in, was the under-five population. And what the Needs Assessment Committee speculated was that because of cost of living here in Ventura County is so high, we wondered if it was as difficult for new families with young children to come into the county. In 2010, when the next U.S. Census is done, we'll see if this trend continues. County indicator showing needs. Oops. There we go. County indicator showing needs. This was the county-specific data that we put together. And we did this in two different ways. One was that we found, we established five key need indicators. The Needs Assessment Group did that, and we analyzed it through our consultant, K&amp;M Enterprises. And these were the five key need indicators that we established. Number one was the percentage of families with children with both parents working or a one-parent household working, number of children 0 to 13 per city, the percentage of children 0 through 13 compared with the existing childcare slots, and the percentage increase in children from 1990 to 2000, which we just saw. And also the median household income. We analyzed all these together. We weighted them per city, and then we did an analysis, a side-by-side analysis, giving them all a score. This is the grid that we came up with. It's on page 22 of your document. Cities receive scores of 1 through 10, 10 being the highest or in the most need of childcare for each of these indicators, the need indicators, which are listed on the left column. You see variable 1 through 5. Those are the five indicators that we just went over. And so the highest score you could receive would be 50, and that shows the highest need for childcare. The ranking is at the bottom row, 1 through 10. And the cities, as you can see, are from left to right, Oxnard, Santa Paula, Port Juanaime, and so on. I'm afraid this slide's a little blurry, but just to let you know, the top three cities showing the highest need for childcare were Oxnard, Santa Paula, and Port Juanaime. Another county indicator that we used were the teen birth rates. We had some good news in that the county teen birth rate is low compared to the state rate. The state rate, which by the way is measured by 1,000 females between the ages of 15 to 19, the state rate is 43.8 births per 1,000 females. The county has a 9.5 birth rate per 1,000 females. So that's the good news. But we did discover some what we call birth rate hotspots. And the hotspots are done by census tracts. They're small, they're segments of the zip codes. And we found the hotspots existing in the same cities that we discovered were in the highest need of childcare, like Oxnard and Port Juanaime and Santa Paula. So we need to sort of be aware of these hotspots. Conclusions and observations. The first one, the Child Care Planning Council has achieved its goal of increasing subsidized childcare slots. And we're very proud of this. This was one of our goals of our first strategic plan, our 2001, 2006 strategic plan. So we were able to accomplish this. But irregardless, number two, a substantial need for affordable and subsidized childcare slot still remains. And this is mostly for subsidized childcare not connected with CalWorks, which takes up about 30% of all subsidized childcare. Need for services for special populations. In particular, we mentioned that there is an increase in the Hispanic population, and so we need to address Spanish speakers who need to learn English. And also special needs children as far as teaching our childcare providers to include them in childcare. Growing need for childcare for school-aged children. We just saw that the population of the school-aged children is increasing the most in the county. So this is something we'll need to address. And lastly, there's no current licensed childcare centers dedicated solely to infant and toddler care. We made note of this. Infant and toddler care is the most expensive care for childcare centers because of the teacher-to-child ratio. It's a 1 to 4 for infants. And so it's more costly to maintain childcare for infants. Also, with preschool for all on the horizon, we have a pilot program that's coming up here in the Juanaime district. That'll be starting up soon. And then there's a possibility that'll go statewide, that will have statewide preschool for all. And there's going to be emphasis on the four-year-olds. We don't want to forget about the 0 to 3 population. There may be a move for some of the teachers to join the preschool for all bandwagon. So we just want to make sure everybody's taken care of. Next steps. Following approval, the needs assessment will be shared with the community, and we'll be posting it on our Child Care Planning Council website and making copies available to agencies or groups that would like that. And then the CCPC will create a strategic plan based on the findings of the needs assessment. So those are our next steps. So today, we respectfully submit the needs assessment for your approval. And we thank you so much for allowing us to come and speak to you today. Thank you.
Thank you for your thorough presentation and the work in the document. It was excellent work in reading it and the way it was presented. K&amp;M did a good job. Other questions, the Board members? Supervisor Long?
I don't necessarily have any questions, but the report is very thorough, I think, and helpful to those of us who are elected or policymakers to think about policies to address the issues here. But also, the cities need to be aware of this kind of a report. So Oxnard has been, for example, getting more and more interested in the total community, the social problems of the community. And I think this would be a very good report to give to them, especially when Oxnard is, for example, one of the hotspots identified.
Right. Well, as a matter of fact, Grace Hoffman, the city manager for Oxnard, is a member of the Child Care Planning Council. And she'll be receiving a copy of this. And she's going to be on our Strategic Planning Committee this coming year. And so we'll be making sure that she's informed.
I think it'd be so good for the elected people also.
Okay.
Because their looking, their scope of looking at problems is broadening, as I see it.
Great.
Any other questions?
I also find it a very comprehensive document. Because we represent the county, I went to the county of Ventura, page 36, and I note that you have Agora Hills in the county, which it isn't. And then also Newberry Park in the unincorporated area has 37,000 people, and that's more like about just a few thousand that are in the unincorporated portion. So if you are thinking about circulating this, you might get comments back from the cities on your figures, and you can revise as necessary.
Those all came from the census.
Right. But Agora Hills still isn't in the county of Ventura. But Newberry Park is, but not in the unincorporated area.
There's one reason that we do that, and that's because a significant amount of our population crosses the border, either seeking care or work. And when they work, they want care that's closer to their work. So we do have a kind of a blurring of the line, particularly in the South, between Agora and Westlake. So there is, that's one of the reasons.
Okay. Well, that's a good reason. It's just maybe it might be footnoted or something. But also, in the terms of Newberry Park, while it's, it does, may have that population, that's not the unincorporated portion. But it's still, I don't mean to say that this report, you know, this flawed, it is very beneficial. It's nice to see that, you know, the first five is also meeting its goals, but obviously we need to do more for those who can't afford the care. Also, when you put a chart together, and this is the percentage of children that are in childcare, then there's the percentage that aren't covered by it. Isn't there also a percentage of those who aren't interested in it? I don't know what that percentage is.
Yeah, and that data's extremely hard to come by. I mean, there are parents, obviously, who stay home to take care of their children. And in the Hispanic population, there's the extended family situation that sometimes takes care of childcare.
That actually would be a good data point, too, is the percentage of families that have dual parents working and which have stay-at-home parents, because that might be some indicator, too, as to the need for childcare. If both parents work, obviously, there's greater need. But this is very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
I don't want to belabor this, but I'm real curious about the connection between childcare and then the preschool for all and the education side of this. And could you sort of summarize what your philosophical view is in terms of childcare? How much of that is education versus how much of that is childcare? And, you know, you made an interesting point. You said, "We have to have one educator to four infants." And you use the phrase educator under childcare. And can you help me?
Childcare provider.
Okay.
Yeah. The line is a little fuzzy when it comes to that childcare versus preschool for all and preschool in general. But when you think about it, children are learning all the time. I mean, play is learning. They learn by play. And there's a process right now. They're trying to come up with a curriculum for preschool. You know, it's, the standards are supposed to be coming out hopefully by 2006. And it's a little different, obviously, than your typical K through 12 learning situation. They're learning social, emotional type things, how to work in groups, that type of thing. It's going to be more structured in certain childcare settings, like certain child development centers, than others. But...
But it's still a great, still a great area.
There is a great, there is a great area.
Okay, thanks.
Definitely.
Other questions? Comments? The action for us is to approve the childcare needs assessment submittal of June 2005.
Move that motion.
Second?
Motion is second. Any objection to that? Hearing non-sel ordered again. Thank you for your good work and the challenges ahead. We thank you. Next up, Board members, we will have a presentation for requesting authorization to establish a real estate fraud program from our District Attorney Greg Totten. And we will set the hearing for this, the public hearing for this, actually, for October 11th at 10:00 a.m. And we welcome District Attorney Mr. Totten.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Johnson. I'm District Attorney Greg Totten, and I'm pleased to appear before you on this item. As Chairman Law, Chairwoman Long mentioned, we are requesting that a public hearing, as required by law, be set on this matter. But I thought I would at least take this little, this opportunity to give you a little background. I know you have other speakers as well on this issue. Essentially, we have a law that's been in place for about 10 years that authorizes Boards of Supervisors to set up a real estate fraud trust fund for a $2 fee that can be assessed on all recorded deeds of trust and various other property-recorded transactions to fund real estate fraud investigation and prosecution. This fund is designed to assist primarily in the prosecution of real estate fraud cases. And we have been reluctant for a number of years to come to your board and seek this funding, primarily for two reasons. Number one, I don't like to impose additional fees. I'm always reluctant to do that. And number two, up until this point, we did not think we had the caseload justification for doing so. But things have changed. Just by way of background, we have filed, just since 2002, seven very complex real estate fraud cases. On average, the loss in these cases of the seven was nearly a half a million dollars. In one case, the loss was nearly $2 million. These types of cases don't typically come to us in a small notebook from a police agency. They typically come to us in truckloads of file boxes. It's not uncommon to have 20, 30, 40, 50 file boxes that our investigators and prosecutors have to wade through to put a case together. There's a number of things driving this change. Right now, as all of us know, and we're blessed to live here in Ventura County, Ventura County is a very desirable place to live. It's a very desirable place to own property. Our real estate market has been exploding from an appreciation standpoint, so there are property owners that have considerable equity in their most important asset, their home. Low interest rates have also operated to produce an explosion in the number of mortgage lenders that are in the market competing for business. We also have seen a demographic impact. Ventura County, as Supervisor Parks is preparing to hold her senior summit on elder issues, we're becoming an older county. And we, one thing we know about our elders is they're more vulnerable to con artists and slick-talking fraud specialists. We also are a community that, from a demographic standpoint, has a very large and growing Hispanic population that is monolingual. We have other populations, Filipino population, many of whom English is not their first language. And unfortunately, these groups tend to be targets, again, of real estate fraud operators. The board letter that we have filed in this matter discusses the law in some detail, and we think it's very appropriate to go forward with this. We've been contacted by a number of people in the industry, some of whom I think are here to speak to you in support of this measure today. I want to talk just about a couple of cases, just to give you an example. They're attached to the board letter, but I think they merit highlighting here. We had one case involving a defendant named Navarro that involved 24 separate fraud charges against this individual. And what he specialized in doing is preying on Hispanic homeowners that had gone where their property was going into foreclosure. He would contact them and very aggressively solicit their business, and then... He would contact them and very aggressively solicit their business, and then steal their equity as a part of the foreclosure process. In addition, and he was a parolee at the time he was doing this. In addition to that, he also found a more wealthy client in the Santa Paula area who he suggested should buy a tree farm and offered to negotiate this transaction, ultimately got over four hundred thousand dollars from this individual to purchase a tree farm. And he never bought any such farm. He never even began negotiations for the purchase of a farm. Just literally stole this money and spent it on very, very lavish purchases. We have another case in which an individual named Velasco and his co-conspirator, a guy named Maldonado, committed identity theft. They took out very expensive mortgages on property that they were enjoying living in, and somebody else's name was on the mortgage and was responsible for the loan. And then finally, we have the Beresweta case, where a mortgage lender was engaging in absolutely outrageous refinancing practices. He was charging very excessive, usurious rates for entering into these refinancing arrangements. And then in situations where there was cash that should have come out of the refinance and gone to the homeowner, he instead put it in his own pocket and stole thousands and thousands of dollars from people who could not afford it. What we know about these cases, whether they impact the wealthy or the most poor in our community, they have a profound impact on people. Sometimes people lose their life savings. It changes their life in a dramatic and very significant way. And they tend to be some of the most heartbreaking cases we prosecute. While they don't involve traditional blood-and-guts crimes, as we like to say, they impact lives. They hurt lives, and they hurt our community. And so for all of these reasons, we are here asking you today to set a public hearing and to direct your clerk to publish notice of that public hearing. By way of housekeeping, we worked very closely with your Abel County Council on this issue. And just one matter I did want to bring to your attention, at his urging, is the law provides for your board to establish a committee that is responsible for monitoring this trust fund and then reporting to your board how the funds are spent. By law, the committee must include the CEO and the district attorney. And then the other phrase that is used in the law is the chief officer in the area of consumer fraud. And the county, this county has never really established a chief consumer fraud officer. Probably the agency that has the most responsibility in addressing consumer fraud is the district attorney's office. As you know, we have a consumer fraud division. But in the eight other jurisdictions where this law has been put into place and the fee has been assessed, they have uniformly selected the sheriff as the third member of this committee. And that is what we are recommending today. And I believe County Council and the CEO joins us in that recommendation. The sheriff does have responsibilities that are related to consumer fraud, and it's an appropriate appointment for this committee. So beyond that, I would ask for your support on this measure and for setting of the hearing. And I'll be prepared to make more comments at that time, should you desire it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Other questions at this time from the board members? We have some public cards submitted, but Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. This looks like a worthwhile effort, certainly. And I look at the, the fee would go for more looking towards home equity fraud, securities fraud tied to real estate lender fraud. I was also, I think the Attorney General is doing some investigation regarding realty firms that are taking basically kickbacks from title insurance companies. And I'm wondering if you're looking at going beyond just the personal, you know, individuals who are being victimized, to looking at more of the larger schemes that are out there.
Yes. In one of the cases that I mentioned, there was a lawsuit, a civil lawsuit, that we prosecuted as well against a larger corporate interest. The investigation that you're talking about with the Attorney General also involves a number of district attorneys. It involves a mortgage company that I believe is one of the largest in the nation that was engaging in very, various inappropriate practices. This particular proposal doesn't really address traditional civil consumer fraud. It is more designed for traditional criminal prosecution of outright theft and fraud related to real estate transactions.
Because I would imagine those other cases, you know, if you're talking about twenty-eight boxes, probably, you know, twenty thousand boxes when you get involved.
Yes, some of them, the case that the Attorney General is involved in, and several large jurisdiction district attorneys, is a huge case. It's a massive undertaking, but I believe it is a civil consumer fraud case.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Parks?
Yeah, I think, I think the fraud, consumer fraud in this particular area is really on the increase. And some people, at least of late, who, whom I've talked with, sometimes don't even know that fraud is taking place, and the fees that they pay are enormous. And so I'm happy you're bringing this to the public's attention.
Happy to do that. And I should say that the industry, the professional industry here in the county is very responsible by and large. And in fact, Kay Runyon, who I know is here today on behalf of the Realtors Association, and I discussed this as long ago as, I think, three years, because they were concerned about some of the practices they were seeing. And so we have a fairly responsible industry that is taking this matter very seriously, thankfully.
Supervisor Bennett.
Realistically, if this funding goes through, would we be able to get all, I mean, I think I have a good feel for the big cases you're trying to do, where people are trying to rip off the equity that somebody has in their homes, et cetera. Where I'm seeing a significant amount of abuse is particularly with Spanish-speaking people who are dealing with unscrupulous realtors, appraisers, and loan officers, and getting them involved in very inappropriate loans for them that they don't know about. Now, that's, you know, my guess is that's boring down fairly deep. Do you think with this kind of funding, we would be able to address those kinds of issues also?
Well, the funding is estimated to produce about three hundred thousand a year. That may change. That may go up. But essentially, right now, what it will pay for in our office is one full-time investigator and one full-time district, deputy district attorney. We always prioritize our cases. And we're going to tend to focus on those cases that involve the greatest amount of harm. And many of those may involve those small cases. The Beresweta case and the Navarro case involve lots of little, small individuals who lost small amounts of money, but big amounts of money to them, but over the spectrum. It was a very broad case. So my hope would be that in the situation you're talking about, we would be able to go after it, not because it just involves one individual, but because it involves a large number of individuals who are preyed upon by one fraud artist.
And I guess the difficulty here is it's, at the front end, there is not an ability to estimate what the financial loss is. In other words, if somebody's getting put into a bad real estate deal because of inappropriate, you don't have an identified equity loss like you do at the other end when it unravels at that end. It makes it harder, I think, to do the assessment. And so anyway, that's a concern, but I'm really, I'm really seeing that practice as exploding here.
We all are. And one of my hopes is that as a part of this, much like we're doing increasingly in the area of identity theft, child pornography, and other elder abuse, where outreach is so important, my hope would be that we can develop materials, presentations, and programs in conjunction with our local industry of assessors, mortgage lenders, and realtors to really communicate this information as broadly throughout the county as we can in a preventative nature, to avoid that individual from being preyed upon.
And I think, and that's the final thought I had, is that the issue of prevention would go a long ways. I know there are a few times when, if that realtor or if that appraiser would have known that it was possible the district attorney was going to look at it, I think they were stopped in a heartbeat, because it's, you know, it's only a potential gain that they have out there and stuff. And so if we could at least create an environment where people felt that there was the potential for the district attorney to do that, so certainly one of the reasons I'll be supporting this. So, thank you.
Supervisor Michaels.
Yeah, just along that same line, we've spent all morning talking about all of us getting older in some way or another. And I think that we're going to find along, as you said, along with the Hispanic population, the senior population, and the fact that people may have, well, most people have been in their homes long enough, once they're seniors after age fifty, that there's considerable equity in those homes. And not all of the population is as savvy as they should be. We all know that. So I would think that working with senior advocacy groups and senior centers, once this information is developed, so that at the senior center, when people are talking, they can communicate with someone who's an expert, and perhaps the industry will take it upon themselves after this is established and your work starts, to do workshops at senior centers or places where Hispanic populations would gather to actually talk directly about the things you need to be aware of when you're buying or selling a home, especially at the rates that we're seeing today.
That's a great idea.
Well, and one you could immediately connect up with is Cabrillo. I mean, they have the Home Center where they give advice on how Hispanic families can enter the home market. And they also, I know, provide some advice on, you know, how they look and select the professional team that helps them do that. But that'd be an excellent one to connect up with, too.
And El Consilio and El Centrito, I know, in the Oxnard area also counsel people on those kinds of issues.
Sometimes relatives are involved in this fraud issue. Quite a few.
That's sad to report, but it's very true.
Right. I'd like to, if I might, invite the public speaker card submitted up to vote, up to voice their opinion. Kay Runyon, thank you for being here, Kay.
Thank you. I'm Kay Runyon, Governmental Affairs Director for the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors. Henceforth, I'll refer to that as VCCAR, okay? I think it's a little shorter. Our most recent discussion about real estate fraud with our board of directors took place in September. And what we were talking about is this potential program. The only two concerns that were even addressed, one was, we hate to put any kind of costs on homebuyer. That's historically true within our industry, those kinds of concerns. The other was the review process and see how effective this program would be. And I see that it indicates in Mr. Totten's report that that would be on an annual basis. Other than that, the board felt this is so critical and becoming so much more important, they all support this program and wish to see it continue. As Mr. Totten mentioned, the two of us started talking about this about three and a half years ago, thought we'd try for an outreach, work with that. Jeffrey Bennett on his staff spoke with different members in our association five, six different times. We presented a forum for our members. We felt it was important for them to at least hear. Standing room only. I think we could probably do it every six months or less and still have a whole new crowd, because we do have quite a few new members, and this is critical for them to become aware of what some of the potential problems can be. Some of them, you know, they just don't believe some of this will happen. And these are even for agents that have been in the business for many, many years. The other area, two other areas where we've been attempting to educate the public, and obviously, we will be working with the district attorney's office even, even more so, and that is, next year will be our fifth annual homeownership exposition, or expo, which has been held in Oxnard. Each year, it seems to increase in people attending. We've had classes just on the basic purchasing of a home, financing of a home, in both English and Spanish. The other area is that we have, through the public access TV, been producing thirty-minute shows on different process landlord tenant issues, so forth. This next year, we want to start doing that in Spanish. I think the city of Oxnard, their governmental affairs channel runs some of those tapes. And then the other one is through Adelphia in Thousand Oaks. I have to contact the people in Ventura. But this is just a basic education process. But the bottom line is, we view this as very critical. It has become worse, as was indicated by Mr. Totten. The only other thing I would like to offer is if during the public hearing, there are any specific persons within our industry that you might want to have testify. We have a professional, yeah, professional standards panel that meets. We have ombudsman that meet. If you would like for them to come present any kind of information to you, please just let me know, and be more than happy to have them here. Or any other aspect of the real estate industry that you, you might need an expert who's been involved for many years to maybe give you some information. More than willing to do that. And I thank you very much, and certain glad to hear that you will be having a public hearing and hopefully support this.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Lindsay Nielsen.
Haven't seen Lindsay here in a long time.
I didn't like her comments about us all getting older. I took that personally. Morning, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Chair. I'm Lindsay Nielsen. I'm, I've been a real estate attorney for over thirty years in the county, and I'm here to wholeheartedly support Mr. Totten's proposal. I'm sort of where the rubber meets the road. I see the people first before I send them over to his office. And there is, because of the great value that we have locked up in our homes and real estate today, there are people whose ethics are lower than flatworms, who prey on people. And I see it specifically in the Hispanic population. And I think that this program will go a long way in at least addressing it. Civil actions just can't deal with this, because the people who make twenty thousand dollars a year are somewhat precluded from going and chasing these fraudulent actions on their own. The, as a past president of the County Taxpayer Association, I'm a little disappointed that they took no position on this. I think this is a vitally needed self-funding program. And I would urge the board to do this. The, what was the old story? The bank robbers go to the banks, because that's where the money is? Well, it's not in the banks anymore, folks. It's in your equity. And there's a lot of people with low ethics, a low morality, that are willing to prey on people. I'll just give you one example, and then I'll shut up. Last week, I had an elderly woman come in to me with a, she had signed a reverse mortgage. Now, these are, these are very commonly used, and they're all details. This was signed fifteen years ago, when it was brand-new. In reading this thing, she gave up one hundred percent of her equity in the property. One hundred percent. I mean, they, these people bought this home that's now worth seven hundred thousand dollars by paying her eight hundred dollars a month for fifteen years. And it's now, I read this, I actually went to another lawyer, and said, "You read this paragraph, and you tell me what you think that means." And we both couldn't believe, because essentially, this woman sold her property under the guise of a reverse mortgage. I don't want to condemn that, because these are wonderful vehicles today. These are tremendous vehicles. But in the early days, it was, nobody quite knew it. And I defy anybody to read these documents nowadays. I mean, I just recently refinanced one of my properties. My wife said, "I'm not signing anything until you tell me what these mean." I said, "You're going to make me read this stuff?" You know, it takes a half an hour just to sign all this stuff, and they're just shoving papers in front of you. So it's an area ripe for fraud. I would urge the board to support this at the public hearing. And I think, Judy, your ideas, public education is very good. I know the County Bar Association puts on programs, we have a little television where we, and I put on one on real estate transactions. We also have, at the local law school, we put on outreach where we deal with these things. But there's a lot of people, they don't know who to turn to in these transactions. And most everybody involved is just looking at the bottom line. We're going to get our commission, I mean, no offense to the real estate industry, but, you know, just sign this and don't worry about it. And Supervisor Bennett is correct. The fees on these things are outrageous when you look at them. I mean, they're a little fifty dollars here, but when you get done, you've spent two thousand dollars for something that shouldn't cost that at all. So I'm very hopeful that the district attorney's program, along with education, will help this problem, and I urge your support.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate you being here. Karen Moss.
Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly, Madam Chair. Greetings, everyone. You know, I was just sitting back here, and I was making a note of, well, how many crimes do I know of that I have encountered over the years, one way or another, that were not mentioned by Greg Totten? And I noticed, I was just able to write down six of them. And I'm colorblind by profession and by nature, but I- And I'm colorblind by profession and by nature, but I do notice that all of these people involve Caucasians, victimizing Caucasians. The worst one that I encountered was an elderly woman who had been a family friend for many years, who had gone to a, an alleged real estate broker who arranged a loan for her and, and later went to her and said he wanted to buy her house from her. And this was a house in Midtown Ventura, as it happens. And she changed her mind about selling the house to him and had agreed to subordination where her first trustee that she owed on the house, no, her trustee that she was going to carry would become subordinate behind, and would become a second behind the first trustee that was not created yet. So what, but it never said in there that there was a limit on the amount of dollars that she would subordinate to. So he went out and got a trustee for 100% of the value of the property. And her second became worthless, because it was for, it was not covered by the equity in the property. And that deal was done in the parking lot, where the title company went in and they canceled the escrow they had. And he convinced the title officer to give him the deed, and he recorded it. And I wanted to go to Greg's office about it. And I would have been there in a minute. But she was elderly and infirm and refused to talk to any authorities about it. I did take her to a prominent attorney here in town, Bill Parker, and he would have taken her case for free, but she wouldn't do it. And the guy turned out to be a, a guy whose real estate broker's license was revoked because he failed to, on his application, tell them that he was a felon who'd been convicted of burglarizing the Sears store in Los Angeles and a hardware store in Orange County. And I later went up to him. He was actually a candidate for the Ventura City Council at one time. And he was working as a volunteer at a charity that I was associated with in this town. And I went up to him and I told him, I couldn't get him, right? He'd escaped. But I walked up to him and I said, I hear Sears is hiring.
Oh.
Why don't you go apply for a job there? And I hear that, and I mentioned the name of the hardware store. I hear they're hiring, too. And he later left town. But this doesn't just affect the, the poor. There's a prominent farmer in Ventura County.
He didn't win a city council, I'm sure.
No, he didn't. No. But he fooled a lot of people. There's a prominent farmer in Ventura County who opened his mail one day and found a late notice from a lender on his farm. And it said, you're late on your $3 million loan. And he said, well, this is a mistake. We called them up. Said, I don't have a $3 million loan. And they said, yes, you do. And he said, no, I don't. This property's free and clear and has been in my family for 100 years, and I don't have a loan on it. And they said, well, we have your signature on a loan and a deed of trust that's recorded on your property. And they did. And a guy had forged their signature on a deed of trust and gone to a prominent, very prominent Ventura employer and went to their pension and profit sharing plan and said, here's your collateral. It's, the ranch is worth 10 million. Here's a $3 million loan, high interest rate, no risk. How about putting your pension funds in it? And they said, okay, let's do that. And the, the people left holding the bag were the, the title company that insured the fraudulent signature. And it took quite a bit of straightening out. And Greg's office got this guy to leave town, too. They relocated him to Folsom. And I can go on and on, and I may eventually someday, write you a little note about these lists of various scams that have been pulled off. And my office, as an appraisal office, we hear about this. People call us up because we know something about real property and what, they call us for advice. And we identify the problem and say, you need counsel and you need to go to somebody about this. And in some cases, the people have attorneys, the wealthy have attorneys. It's the poor people that don't. And it's, this is a, a way of warning people. And Phil Schmidt has been on this, the clerk. I think he could post a sign out there that says, real estate fraud is a crime. If you suspect it, call this number. And we've created a, a, a way of blocking it. So if he doesn't come in with a whole bunch of scalps, it may be because he's working well enough to warn enough people. But I have a feeling that all of us should form a posse and let's go get these guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. That's all the public cards submitted. The item is before the board, if there are further questions or...
Move approval.
There's a motion and a second, and that is to set the public hearing on this item for 10:00 time certain on October 11th. Any objection to that? Hearing none?
Good work.
Thank you for your work. We'll see you on, in October. And thank you for being here to speak and the work done on this. All right, board members. 10:30, item 25, time certain item. Supervisor Parks. Many Mansions.
Thank you. Our board has been fortunate to receive some presentations, I know, by Cabrillo Economic Corporation Development Corporation. And I was asked, Many Mansions, if they, too, would come and give a presentation, so we can get an idea of what's happening out in the East County primarily, in terms of helping to provide affordable housing to people out there. And Rick Schrader here is with the, is the director of Many Mansions and has agreed to come and give a PowerPoint. And I've, like, if you'd like to take this presentation, I think we've put aside 20 minutes for this, if you'd like, and looking forward to hearing it.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Parks. Thank you for arranging this presentation. Madam Chair, person, members of the Board of Supervisor, County staff, I am Rick Schrader. I am the Executive Director for Many Mansions. And Many Mansions is a nonprofit affordable housing and service provider. And today, I want to explore a little bit those three elements of being a nonprofit, managing and developing affordable housing, and then providing life-enriching services for our residents. And then at the end, I'd like to talk about our upcoming special event called the Bowls of Hope. Many Mansions, see if I can do this. Okay. Many Mansions is a nonprofit corporation. It was founded 26 years ago by a former colleague of yours, Frank Shiloh. He and many other community members of Thousand Oaks and the Cano Valley got together to address the need for affordable housing in that community. It is a nonprofit. We have 501(c)(3) status. We have a Board of Directors. Our Board of Directors comprises of members of the community. And one-third of the Board must consist of those of low-income status. It is a mixture of people throughout the county. And what distinguishes us, perhaps, from for-profit affordable housing developers is that we really care about our residents, that the activities that we gauge in are for their benefit, and that we try to serve the needs of the community. We have a very strict conflict of interest policy. We're frequently audited by many different governmental agencies, financial institutions, and that we really look at our long-term needs. And one of the reasons I wanted to give this presentation today is to perhaps explore ways that we could work more closely with the county to solve many of your ongoing concerns and issues. We have changed over the years, I think, in part of that, because of that. And much of what we do is, is different than what we did 26 years ago. Our basic mission, though, is to provide affordable housing. We provide affordable housing. We manage the housing. And our target area is Ventura County. Now, as you'll see, most of our developments and most of our activities have been in East County, in Thousand Oaks and in Simi Valley. But our overall scope is throughout Ventura County. Over this time, we have grown, and we've grown quite a bit over the last five to seven years. As of now, we now own and manage nine apartment complexes, over 400 rental units of housing. We have over 1,000 residents live with us and over 300 children. So quite a few children and families. We work closely with many, many governmental agencies, of course. We work with HUD. We work with the State of California, HCD. We work with the county. And we work through local governmental agencies, especially the city of Thousand Oaks has been a very big supporter of us. We do that in part because of the financing that we need to develop this affordable housing. As you'll see in our apartment complexes that we've developed, we have multiple sources of money and support coming from many different agencies and different sources. Affordable housing breaks down really into two different categories. One category is transitional housing, and the other category is permanent housing. And I saw many of you last week at the Casa de Esperanza Affordable Housing Complex. That is, that is an example of transitional housing, housing for people that will stay for a limited duration. Much of our housing, most of our housing is permanent housing, though. After someone has lived in transitional housing or else, or have been homeless, they come to live with us permanently. Our first permanent housing complex is Shiloh Gardens, named after Frank Shiloh. It's a very typical type of development that we have done in the past. It's family individuals that live there. It was developed back in 1988, one of our very first tax credit properties in the country. One of our major sources of funding for affordable housing has been the tax credit program under Section 42 of the Internal Revenue Code. And that has played a vital role and a major role in building affordable housing throughout the country and throughout this county. Back then, to build a 29-unit complex from scratch, new development, the project cost was only $3.1 million. Costs have gone up since that period of time. It's in a unique partnership, though. Most of our properties are owned in a partnership. Some are owned directly by Many Mansions, but some are owned in a partnership. This is a very unique partnership where we're actually a general partner, along with the city of Thousand Oaks and the Cano Future Foundation. Shadow Hills, also in Thousand Oaks, is our largest property, 101 units. And this was developed in 1991 and 1992, again, with the assistance of the city of Thousand Oaks. It was a major source of crime back then. This was a place that was very overcrowded, that had lots of police activity. And from my understanding, we were approached by the city of Thousand Oaks to acquire it, which we did. We built a community room there, which, as you'll see in our children's programs, have been vital. And it's been, it's been a very good property, outdoor playground. We've recently refinanced the bonds, the existing bond financing on it. And as a result, we're going to put in about another $1.3 million of rehab. In the year 2000, we did have a fire. No one was hurt, but we did have one of our buildings caught on fire. Villa Garcia is another affordable housing tax credit property. Again, this used to be the Island Village Inn in Thousand Oaks. Again, very rundown, lots of drug dealing, lots of crime. We acquired it, performed, I think, over $2 million of rehab. We really gutted each of the buildings and then rebuilt it out from scratch, again, building a community room as well. hacienda de Feliz is our most recent new construction project, opening in February of 2005. Again, has a community room, different type of style. It is upstairs, downstairs, underground garage. Being in Thousand Oaks, of course, we had to build around various oak trees, so it has a unique design and a much higher project cost, as you can see, over $8 million. But it is a beautiful place that gives the people a much greater sense of community and living space. A playground there that was donated by the Westlake Rotary. And the community room, fully stocked with new computers and furniture, again, through donations from members of the community. Bella Vista is our latest property that we closed escrow and purchased at the end of June of this year. We just had our grand opening there, again, in Thousand Oaks, 72 units. Will be performing some rehab. We're currently doing a, a termite treating right now, so half the residents are actually not there right now, termiting and other types of rehab. The best thing about this property is right across, it's right across the street from hacienda de Feliz, and we'll be able to really integrate services for the kids and adults. The other type of housing that we have is the supportive housing. It's the housing for a specific purpose, for a specific population. We are the leading provider of permanent housing for the mentally disabled in this county. Mentally disabled, some physically disabled, emotionally disabled. We have a whole department, a whole range of people within that department that provide case management services, counseling, job development, financial planning, daycare Casa de Paz is our one property in Simi Valley, developed through the HUD Section 811 program and also assistance, not only from this county, but also the city of Simi Valley. This property, this, this property is solely for those with, that have been homeless and that have a mental disability. Again, we have onsite case management support. And we work very, very closely with the Behavioral Health Department in all our supportive housing. It's very important for people that have, that have mental disabilities, especially those that are homeless, to receive the proper support and services. It's impossible unless they have stable and safe a living environment. Haza Village, another supportive housing property in Thousand Oaks, is a converted motel. Used to be the Village Inn motel. Many of our units, the single SRO-type units, again, are for those that have been homeless with a mental disability. This is also a property that was developed, again, with substantial assistance from the county, from the city of Thousand Oaks, from other multiple sources of financing. I think it has seven different layers of financing, but it has a very much of a community feel. It's got a nice community room, and the residents are quite colorful, some of them. But I think we've been able to really provide a lot of support, the support that they need. Warwick Apartments is a mixed supportive housing, low-income housing that we have in Thousand Oaks. We received a support from the city of Thousand Oaks and recent support from the county. The county provided us the needed funds to also do termite treating and some other rehab that we simply ran out of money for. It's a property that's worked very well with a mixture of populations in there, again, onsite case management. Stole Houses are one transitional housing facility. People there have to be homeless and single parents. So everyone there has a child. Everyone there is a single parent. It is a place that people can live one to two years, and we have a fairly extensive program for them. They have to participate in the case management, savings account, job development, educational development. It is a place that is a gated community. We limit outside visitors. It's a safe community. And it's, we have many women there, especially, that have come from an abusive relationship, although it's not exclusively for that. But it is a place, as we say, for people to kind of get back on their feet again. It's hard to do when you don't have stable housing. I would also say at the, that we also are going to be participating in a program sponsored by the city of Thousand Oaks to house those families and individuals that have been displaced by the Katrina hurricane. The city of Thousand Oaks is providing some money. And those appropriate housing where we have vacancies, we will be... we have vacancies, we will be housing many of the families and then providing the supportive services for them. Our major supportive service, though, is our children's service. Again, it's not just the housing. We want to also provide as many life-enriching services that we can, and we start with the children. If we're ever going to break the cycle of poverty, it must start with the children and it must start with education. So our major children's program is our after-school homework program at our three community rooms. We have the children come every night, Monday through Thursday, and through staff and community volunteers, we help them with homework. We're also exploring with the Boys and Girls Club to help provide additional programs and services for the children. But it's something that we also integrate with the kids and their school. So we're sort of on the same track. We receive support from the Caneo School District to provide what's known as the Success Maker Software Program. This is a software program the kids use in school to help with their reading, literacy, vocabulary, learning English as a language, math skills. And our computers are going to be fully networked with the school's computers, so the child will be able to log in at our site and really go back to the program that they had been working on at the school district, at the school. We provide a free summer camp for our kids, variety of activities. We have a special program for the older kids, the teen kids, every Friday. We have, we're trying to develop more of the career development aspect of that. We're looking to develop an internship program where our teen kids can be placed with local businesses for summer jobs. We're also trying to develop a scholarship fund for our kids that are interested in going on to higher education. So we just celebrated our 25-year anniversary, and we're developing new programs and new services for the next 25 years. Our upcoming event is going to be a new event. Some of you are familiar with our major fundraiser called the Duck Race that we have in the summertime, but this event is slightly different. It's called the Bowls of Hope. And it's at the Calamagus Ranch. The proceeds will benefit our adult services program, our programs for the homeless and the mentally disabled. And it's a program that we're asking local schools, potters, other artists, to make bowls. You can see, these are special bowls that they're making. And for $25, people will come out, and you can choose your bowl. And then we'll have local restaurants and others provide soup to create a type of a soup line feel. So you get your bowl, you'll get simple soup, bread, and as I said, it's all to donate, it's all to provide support for our adult services program. There's going to be an art fair component of it, many schools. I was out at the Medea Creek Middle School in Oak Park just last week. They're going to be participating. I gave them a whole presentation on homelessness and the causes of homelessness, and they're very excited about creating some artwork depicting or symbolizing homeless and the disabled. So it's a special program. I bought, I brought our special pins for each one of you called the Bowl of Hope pins. I'd like to give that. If I can, and like to invite everyone to the event as well. Thank you.
And we thank you.
So that I'd like to thank you.
Wonderful overview. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. We appreciate Many Mansions a lot out in the Thousand Oaks, Caneo Valley area, and their outreach has been fantastic. The population that you serve is so demanding, and being able to have housing in place is just amazing. It's also one of those win-win situations when you take an old motel that's pretty seedy and crime-ridden and being able to change that to provide homes for people. And we had a police resource center there for a while, provide some social services there. And the same thing with the apartment buildings, and as they get older, to be able to go in there, renovate them, provide them specifically for people who need affordable housing. Looking at Los Angeles, downtown Los Angeles, they're putting together an ordinance to require that you can't demolish old hotels that have people living in them without mitigating that and providing housing somewhere else for those people. And this whole concept of being able to take existing housing stock and improve it is just, I think, a wonderful benefit, as well as providing some of the nicest-looking affordable housing you're going to see anywhere in terms of new buildings. So thank you so much for coming and presenting this. I think it is an eye-opener and very helpful for the board.
Just take a minute here and thank you for coming and presenting this, and the seriousness, serious attitude you have about this is very important, and I commend you for it. And sometimes we in the west part of the county think that you in the east part of the county don't do much as far as providing assisted living and housing and so forth. So I want to commend, I counted a total of 409 units, is that...
Yes.
More or less.
That's exactly right, yes.
And let me just tell you a problem we face on the west end primarily. Compared to Thousand Oaks or Simi or Moore Park, even though housing prices are high in Oxnard and Santa Paula, they're growing in value, and unincorporated areas like El Rio, they tend to provide the people who work in the east end of the county with, as their employees, their employees come from the west end to work in the east end. If we can try to bring about a direction which you're taking, maybe only add to it a bit, it will help us, especially in the city of Oxnard. I was called to a home the other day where one house was being used as a boarding house and had 10 unrelated people living in the dwelling. And I can show you garages and so forth. So the more you help, the better off we're going to be also on the west end of the county. So I commend you for that.
Thank you.
Other comments? We thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For your time and your work.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure. Thank you for being here. Board, does the receiving file action?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Hearing no objection. We thank you and expect we'll be working together.
Yes, I'd like, we'd like that.
Thank you. Now, board members, we're going to move ahead to welcome our visitors, our delegation from the State Council of China that's visiting our boardroom in our county today. And I certainly thank Del Tompkins in helping to arrange this. I apologize, we're a little bit behind, but we'll greet you and welcome you, and I know you've got a full agenda the rest of this afternoon in your visit to our county. We are honored that the delegation of officials and dignitaries from the Government Offices Administration of the State Council of China is visiting the United States, and that the Government Offices Administration of the State Council of China is a central federal-level government agency, similar to our General Services Administration here in the United States. And it really is an honor that the delegation chose to visit our Ventura County during your trip to America to learn about procurement and contracting real property administration and other local practices that we practice here at the local county government level. We are very proud of the work we do and the managers and the leadership team we have that addresses our needs and our administration of government. It is a pleasure that the delegation includes representatives from the Department of Finance Council, from the State Assets Division, from the Office of Administration, the Comprehensive Division of the Real Estate Management for the Chinese Council, and all of you that are in our boardroom today. We have a resolution that we would like to present to you, and I would invite all of the board members that will step down to greet you. And it is on behalf of the board that we extend our sincere and warm welcome to visitors and on behalf of the citizens of our region, and that the state of California and the United States of America, we appreciate your visit. The board expresses our hope that the visit will be a rewarding experience for you, filled with an open exchange of knowledge and culture, as well as an opportunity to promote and foster the building of positive relationships and cooperation between our countries. We are truly honored that you are here. And we'll step down now if we might to greet you, and Del, you're going to coordinate that for us, right? And invite you up, please. Okay, please, please.
We just stay here, right?
Right there at the mic, and then we'll come down.
All right, okay. Just to give them a brief introduction of what you said, right?
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I just cut it a bit short, but...
That's fine. Thank you. We'd like to present this to you. An appreciation for your visit.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Okay.
Any others, any? Just greeting, any questions? That's great.
All right, okay.
That's fine. Okay, we welcome you. Enjoy the rest of your afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you know, when I traveled over there right after I got on board, and I still have a stack about that size that are printed in English on one side and Chinese on the other. I got so busy.
Appropriate time, too.
I know, and I could have used them up.
All right, board members, that completes our regular agenda. We still have some closed-session discussion to go into, and then our day will be completed. Will there be an announcement?
No announcements.
Did not expect so. So let's go take care of our closed-session agenda item and be on with the day. We thank you.